I'm gonna mute all the commissioners, just so. Everybody? Donna, Jeanie, Lulu, and Larios. Okay, Mrs. Tillitson's on you. Kick it off, right?
Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. First order of business is swearing in of new commissioner.
Alright.
Alright.
Uh, I know Angie was gonna come to do this, and I've texted her, and I don't, she might have forgotten. So, do you want me to do it, Fernando? I have the paper.
Okay, yeah, if you have it, go ahead and, uh, and just have her, have Lulu repeat.
Yeah. So...
You know the drill.
Ready?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I know I gave you a copy, too.
Yeah, that's why, that's what I'm looking for.
Actually, it might be Ramos who just got on the line.
Okay, ready?
Alright, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lulu, this, Garizales, do so-
I, Lulu, this, Carizales, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I, Lulu, this, Carizales, do so-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the United States of Cal- I mean, and the Constitution of the State of California.
Obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And I will, will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Yep, subscribe and storm before me this May, day of 4th, 2020. Day of the 4th. And I already have your little paper right here, magically.
Yay, welcome, Lulu.
Yay, congratulations!
Thank you.
Congratulations!
Thank you.
And Lulu, just, uh, to clarify, how do you prefer to be addressed? Lulu, Lurdes, Ms. Carizales?
Lulu.
Lulu, okay. Perfect, thank you. Alright, Jeanie, it's all yours.
Alright, we move on to the approval of the minutes of the March 2nd, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I wasn't at the meeting, but I will second, if that's alright.
Yes, it is. Alright.
Thank you, Donna.
Okay. Public comment, announcements, unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the Planning Commission at this time on items on the agenda, or on any other items of interest to the public within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. State law prohibits any member of the Commission from commenting or taking action on matter not on the agenda. Comment is limited to three minutes per person.
How long is it?
Uh, Jeanie, before we do the public comment, um, we need to do a roll call vote on the previous item, the approval of minutes, if you, um, if we could just backtrack a little bit.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No worries.
No worries, so I'll start. Um, Commissioner Garizales?
Present.
Uh, if your, your vote on the minutes, so, or aye or ye- yea or nay, to approve the minutes.
Yay.
Yea, okay. Commissioner Ramos? Are you on the line? Or did we lose him? I saw a number pop up, and I guess we lost, okay. Absent. Uh, Commissioner Larios?
Yes, I approve.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillitson?
Yes.
Right, um, 401, absent. Now you may-
Do we have any, uh, public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment and move on to the public hearings. Hearing number A, 5A, conditional use permit, CUP 2006-03, an application submitted on behalf of The Wonderful Company to amend an existing CUP for purposes of establishing a community wellness center at the site of a former child development center preschool. 1225 South 7th Avenue. Staff report.
Yes, thank you, uh, Commissioner Tillitson. Um, I believe we have somebody from The Wonderful Company on the line, so after I give sort of a brief overview of the project, if, uh, Mr. Chad Givens, I believe, uh, would like to, uh, speak on the project, uh, you're more than welcome to. But essentially, this project, as you know, is, uh, with regard to the former Wonderful preschool on 7th and 30th, Highway 33. Uh, they, uh, decided, Wonderful decided to close the preschool and convert the space into a community wellness center. Uh, because they were operating under a conditional use permit for the preschool, because it is zoned as a residential area, um, they are needing to amend the previous, uh, the previous conditional use permit, um, to allow for this new use. Um, and what they propose to use the space for is, uh, for health, uh, healthcare, behavioral health counseling, uh, health coaching, nutritional support, physical wellness, and other types of resources, uh, for, for families. Um, they, they expect to be open between 8:00 to 5:00 PM, uh, five days a week, and potentially some evenings and weekends. Um, and, uh, if you, per the staff report, uh, staff feels that the Commission, um, is able to make all the findings, the required eight findings, to approve this conditional use permit. Um, also, there is no sequel review that is, um, applicable, because it is, uh, an existing facility and no, uh, major construction exterior or interior will be part of the project. Um, and yeah, we, I mean, we, we don't have any reservations as far as staff goes, um, so I'll go ahead and turn it over if there's anybody from Wonderful Company who'd like to, uh, speak on the project.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. This is, uh, Chad Givens with The Wonderful Company. I appreciate your time, commissioners, uh, in looking at this, uh, CUP application. Uh, we are very excited to be progressing down this road for our wellness centers. Uh, our wellness centers provide, uh, health and care for many of our workers, their families, their children, and our students. Uh, we see, um, a need for having some closer proximity to our employees and the residents of Avonel. Uh, our goal here is to supply, uh, health and wellbeing to each one of these individuals, as well as a family resource center. Uh, we've been a, been a big proponent, especially during this time, of ensuring we have things that we're able to pass out to the community as needed, things that are, are somewhat hard to find. Uh, and we want to be that resource to the community as, as we can. Uh, and, and also looking at this as a wellness perspective, uh, and having the clinic inside. We're looking at some after-school programs as well. That's going to be something that we're use the facility kind of existing as is. Uh, so we're very excited to have this and to continue our partnership with the City of Avonel and the residents here, uh, and continue to do great things.
Thank you, Chad.
Okay, uh, we would consider that basically our public hearing?
Uh, we would still want to open it up to see if there's any other public comment.
Okay, if there's any other public comment on the, uh, the change for the wellness center, um, now's the time. Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, discussion?
I have a question. This is Donna. Um, should, uh, Wonderful Company decide to sell this? Um, how would that, would it just depend on who would be buying it and what they would be using it for? Whether we had to go back through this process or, or, um, how it's zoned?
Yes, that's a good question. So, if the property was sold, depending on the use, if the new owner wanted to continue the same use as, uh, The Wonderful Company, then there would be no need to bring it back, because the, the conditional use permit would stay with the property. Um, however, if, if there was any different proposed use, then yeah, we would have to consider a new use.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any comments, Lori?
Um, I do actually have a question for Mr. Givens. Uh, I actually, um, wanted to know, is this facility only gonna be for the work of The Wonderful, or is it for anyone in the community?
You know, we're not positive quite yet. Uh, and I'll, I'll say it for this reason. Uh, we're starting with a, uh, a light opening, if you will, once this, uh, once we get to the point where it's ready to go. Uh, we want to get a bill for exactly how many people are gonna be using it. Um, and that doesn't just include the clinic portion, but it will include the family resource. Now, in lots of deals, our family resource centers are open to the public, uh, and they're, they're busy quite often. Uh, our clinics, we specialize really in our employees and their families, uh, and their children. Um, but I know that there has been a lot of talk, uh, to see what kind of outreach we will be able to do to the city as a whole, and not just our employees. So, really, it's just going to be a fill at the start to fill, to fill it out. Um, is this going to be something that we're going to have enough staffing for? Or do we need to staff up and bring in more for the community? And, and really, once we get closer to that point, start engaging the community and finding out exactly what they're desiring out of this as well. So, it's, it's, it's evolving. If, if that's, um, an evergreen process, it's evolving. Hopefully, that helps answer a little of the question.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Givens. Um, yes, I think it would be great, um, for the whole community to be able to take advantage of this facility. It seems like, um, I think there is a great need here in the community, so, thank you again.
You're welcome.
Did Mr. Ramos join us?
Uh, not yet. I don't see any new guests as of this moment, no.
Okay, Lulu, do you have any comments?
She asked my question, that was when I was wondering if it was gonna be open to, uh, the citizens of Avonel or anyone? Or just the employees? But he answered the question mainly just the employees in the beginning.
And, and again, that's, the clinic side is, is mainly the employees and their families on the beginning of that. The family resource and the after-school programs is going to be community-wide.
Okay. Do we have any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Okay, then, um, I guess I need a motion? Do we have an, do we have a quorum?
Yes, there's four out of five.
Okay. We need a motion, uh, to, for, uh, resolution for the, uh, Avonel Planning Commission approving the conditional use permit for The Wonderful Company?
This is Donna. I moved that the Planning Commission adopt, res- the resolution of the Avonel Planning Commission approving conditional use permit number 2020-1 for The Wonderful Company Community Wellness Center located at 1225 South 7th Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I second that.
Roll call. Um, Commissioner Garizales?
Yes.
Commissioner Larios?
Aye.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillitson?
Aye.
Alright, 401, absent.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate this.
Thank you, Mr. Givens.
You guys have a-
Looking forward to it.
You too, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, our next is, uh, public hearing B, Zone Text Change 2020-01. Recommendation to the Avonel City Council that various sections of the Avonel zoning ordinance be changed to assist in abating illegally parked trailers and recreational vehicles on city streets. Staff report.
Yes, thank you, uh, Commissioner Tillitson. We, um, as you might recall, about a year ago, and, and give me one second, I'm trying to pull up the item. Uh, we, the Planning Commission asked staff to look, to work with our city attorney and code enforcement to address the, the ongoing problem we've had of RVs and trailers, um, and commercial vehicles being parked on city streets. And, um, we have been working with our city attorney. We had a change of sta- of, of staff at this, at our city attorney's, uh, firm, at Farley Law Firm, and so, um, and we've also ha- have had a few projects, um, on our hands. So, we were, uh, it took us a while to finally get to this point, but we did, uh, want, uh, the Planning Commission to consider the changes, um, that were discussed about a year ago, which essentially boiled down to establishing a 72-hour period where if a, a vehicle, um, an illegal vehicle such as an RV or trailer, um, or actually, not a, an illegal vehicle, but a, a vehicle that is parked illegally, um, can have 72 hours where they cannot park within a thousand feet of that same location, um, or else they would be, they would be cited and towed. Um, it also, the changes that, that we discussed previously also, um, recommend to the City Council budgeting, uh, to be able to furnish uh, and install signs at all entrances of, of town. And because that is legally required in order for us to be able to enforce this ordinance and to be able to tow vehicles. Then, uh, you know, we also wanted to give code enforcement, uh, with this revision, the ability to cite, um, according to their normal code enforcement practices, because previously, it was, um, the wording of, of our municipal code and, and our zoning ordinance allowed really only the, the police department to be able to do that sort of enforcement. So now, we've kind of expanded that to include code enforcement, so that they can both work together to be able to, to resolve these issues. Um, we, we cleaned up some of the language and, and, uh, created a stronger definition of, of what constitutes a, an RV trailer, um, and, uh, kind of highlighting, uh, making it easier to understand that ordinance for all parties, not just enforcement, but for the public as well. And to that end of, of providing better, uh, easier, uh, information to, or easier to access information to the public, we, uh, we created a flyer that we presented in a packet for your review that we would be distributing to, distributing to the community, but also handing out to, to violators to, that have a history of parking, um, RVs for long periods of time on the street, and RVs and trailers. Um, so, that, that's really what the changes come down to. Uh, we would have to, um, you know, make sure that the, um, the normal code enforcement processes are followed. And in the staff report, we mentioned, um, considering, um, you know, increasing the potential fines or keeping them as-is. Currently, code enforcement's normal process includes a, a warning, and then, uh, a fine, uh, for the second offense, which is $50, which then increases to 100, and then to 150. And then the city would be able to, to take, um, its own recourse by removing the vehicle or, or things like that. So, um, you know, the Planning Commission can make those recommendations to the City Council, and ultimately, the City Council would have to decide if that's what they would want to adopt. But, um, what you have before you is what we had discussed last year, and, um, you know, if there are any changes that you'd like to make, or if you're happy with what staff has, has presented, um, then we recommend adoption of the attached resolutions. Are there any questions?
I have no questions, Fernando, I'm very happy.
Glad to hear, Ms. Elliott.
Yeah, I'm very pleased.
No questions. Looks great.
No questions.
Alright, I guess we'll op- open it up to a public hearing. Is there any public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the, uh, Planning Commissioners?
Looks good to me.
I'm good.
Okay, then, um, do I have a motion? To approve? Let me get my number here.
I motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call for that. Um, Commissioner Garizales?
Yes.
Commissioner Larios?
Aye.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillitson?
Aye.
And then we also have the two other smaller items, Fernando, that was by motion, right?
Yes, um, thank you for reminding me. So, by motion, we are recommending, um, that, that the, uh, Planning Commission approve the recommendation to council to improve, or to, uh, approve the attached flyer, um, which is Exhibit C, um, and also the tag that code enforcement would be placing on vehicles, um, that are found to be in violation of, of the ordinance. Um, and then, we also have the recommendation to set aside the budget, if I'm not mistaken, Tony.
Or the signs, yeah.
So, what we're proposing is $10,000, um, to be budgeted in, in the 21, uh, 2021 fiscal year budget for the signs.
Do we need a note, motion for both of those, or together?
We, I, I believe you can move for both together. Joseph, what was, was that you?
Yeah, that was me. If you wanna combine them, that's fine. If you want to separate them, that's fine. Um, it's just up to you, whoever's making the motion.
Or is that, Joseph, was that you?
Yeah, that's correct.
Oh, it's good, it's coming out really, really neat. Would you be able to put it in the chat, maybe, and I'll read it? It came out kind of like a robotic mutated.
Okay, so we just need a motion, then, to, uh, approve Exhibit B and Exhibit C?
Uh, to approve Exhibit B and C, and to also approve the recommendation for council. I don't think there's an exhibit for the, um, recommendation to-
The money.
Yeah, to budget the funds, $10,000.
Okay.
Joseph said that we can do it as one. It can be one motion or two, depending how the motion is worded. That was what he said.
So, if, whoever is motioning, uh, first, if you can make sure to, uh, specify both that the, um, flyers and the tag, um, motion, approval of the ta- flyers and the tag, as well as the budget recommendation to council.
Okay, I motion to approve flyers and tags, and to approve the recommendation?
For, uh, the budget item to council.
For the budget item.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Roll call, Commissioner Garizales?
Yes.
Commissioner Larios?
Aye.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tillitson?
Aye.
Alright, 401, absent.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we move on to new business. Reorganization of officer positions, vice chair.
Yes, thank you. Um, as you know, um, we, Lulu is filling, uh, the seat of our previous vice chair, Omero Solorio, and so, it is up to the Planning Commission now to select a new vice chair and, um, in order, uh, to, um, establish that position for, for another two-year term. Um, so, or, I, actually, Joseph, correct me if I'm wrong, does this, if we reorganize, would the vice chair position be for the two years or for the remainder of Mr. Solorio's previous term? Sorry, we're still having trouble understanding you, Joseph.
That, that, give me one second, I'm gonna unplug and re- unplug, uh, replug my mic and, um, I don't know if you heard any.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't catch that, um, but-
Work on his mic, or change it, or something?
Yeah, it might be, it might be an issue with your, with your hardware, Joseph, your microphone, or it- do you want to try calling in, uh, with your phone? I know, technology, technology issues. Yeah, so, okay, thanks, Joseph. We'll go ahead and wait for you to call.
Okay, I think I'm ready to talk now, is that, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, a lot better.
Okay, sorry about that. I, I was on like a headset with a, a mic on it, and it apparently wasn't working. Um, so, to be, to be quite candid with you, I'm not 100% positive. There, there's two situations, whereas if someone comes in in the middle of something, then depending on how far in it is, they either, um, fill in and you have to, you know, you have to fill that position with so many days, and then they either fill out the remainder of the term, or a, a new election has to be held. And it, it all depends on the timing of the, the incumbent person that left, so depending on how much time was left on theirs. And so, those are the two possibilities. Um, eh, but again, we, we just did some research on this for a different city, but, uh, I, I don't know 100% one way or the other which one is which. Um, so, we could account for those conditions, and then I could get back to you, um, as soon as possible with a, a definite answer, or however, however the, the Planning Commission wants to proceed.
Sure, so, um, if I could chime in, the, so the, Mr. Solorio had recently started his second term, if I'm not mistaken, um, and, or was it his second term? I believe his second term. Um, uh, but I, I think that Glenda, who appointed Lulu, it was a, it was a, sort of a normal appointment process. Uh, I, I think her intent was to, for, uh, Lulu to, um, have a brand-new term, to start fresh with, with her own term. If, if, I, I think that's what, um, she intended. So, I don't know if that plays in, because th- these aren't elected positions, they're appointed by the council, so I don't know how that plays into things.
Um, okay, my bad, then. Um, the other one was elected position that I was talking about. Um, I, I, I believe if it's just an appointed position, then, uh, it would probably just fill out the, the, the term of the appointed position, though, though one, did he depart early?
Yeah.
Or was it just an opening?
He departed early into his, uh, second term.
So, I, I think the, the safest bet would just be to appoint her for the remainder of his term, and then, um, you know, i- i- it, depending on the, the Planning Commission's direction or whatnot, yeah, you could either, you know, reo- you know-
reopen that position, or just leave it as is. Um-
Okay, so we-
Or if there's any-
So, we could appoint, um, so, Lulu could be appointed for, for the remainder of, of Mr. Solorio's term, but, uh, then the, we can reorganize for the vice president, or elect a new vice president, which would serve the full, uh, two years, or the remainder of that person's term, whoever it is.
I, I, my thoughts would be the remainder of that person's term, you know, the Vice President. So it would be for the remainder. And so that way, everything kind of stays on track for future. But again, I, I can look into this a little bit further if you would like me to, or just move on as, as normal.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if the Planning Commission would like to, to take on the, the voting process for new Vice President, Vice Chair, and we can move, move forward from there.
What do you think, Donna?
Ready?
You want to just go ahead?
I'd like to nominate. I'll go ahead. I nominate Ms. Larios for, Ms. Larios for the position of Vice Chair for the remainder of the term, Mr. Solorio's term.
I second.
Is there any other?
Or, like, before, so we have a nomination in a second. Do we have any other people that would like to be nominated before we go into voting? If, if there's none, then we can go straight to the motion.
Okay.
Now you need a motion?
Well, no, I, I believe that kind of was a motion and a vote. So like, uh, we should just do a roll call to see if everyone agrees or if there's any nays.
Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah. Commissioner Garisales?
Lulu, you can just say aye or nay.
You with us?
Or abstain.
User maybe? Are you, Commissioner Garisales, your vote? I think she's chatting. She says yes, okay. Commissioner Larios?
Aye. I accept.
Commissioner Elliott?
Aye.
Commissioner Tillitson?
Aye.
All right, 4-0, one absent. The nominee carries, I guess.
Congratulations, Limari. Glad to have you as Vice Chair.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we move on to old business, of which there isn't any, in Economic Development Oversight Committee comments.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. If anybody is driven by the community center, there's been a lot of progress made. We're pretty close to wrapping up the first phase. I think they just have to put in some more sheets on the back of the building and, and pave the parking lot, which should be done within the next couple of weeks. And then, so in the, in the meantime, we're waiting for the state to let us know if they will be granting us another $3.5 million to continue that project and, and outfit the, the interior of the building, or as much as we can with $3.5 million. And so I think at the last Planning Commission, we also, I also discussed, if I recall correctly, the Prop 68 grant that we received, which we now have a executed agreement for, which was for the kids' park behind the boxing club. So that's exciting. We're, we're getting ready to, to start moving on that and issuing requests for proposals and things like that. As you know, the, the COVID-19 crisis has caused quite a bit of, uh, not, I wouldn't say panic, but a lot of concern in the community, especially with our local businesses. And at the last council meeting on Mon, was it last Monday? Last Thursday, I'm sorry. We, we had proposed a small business loan program for businesses who were, who were struggling through this, through the current crisis. And with that, and we actually had proposed $25,000 for, for council to set aside. They voted for $50,000 to make small loans, which would be potentially forgivable if certain conditions are met, up to a maximum of $3,000 per business. And so what we're looking to do is, is really just help businesses through this crisis by helping them either pay rent, utilities, help keep some employees on, on board. I know a lot of the businesses that have been closed as non-essential businesses are really, really hurting. And we, you know, we've gotten lots of calls from businesses who just want to know when they would be able to open back up. And I know it's the same across the state and across the country with all, at all the states that currently have a shelter-in-place order. But, you know, whatever we can do to help businesses, we're, we're looking at it. So, you know, I, it, it sounds like, based on the governor's call, I was talking to Melissa, our city manager, this, this morning, and it sounds like things might start to, might be starting to ease up as far as restrictions on businesses, if businesses can implement safety guidelines and, and those kinds of things. So I think it's moving in the right direction. But in the meantime, a lot of these businesses are, are needing to, to make their, their payments and utilities and those kinds of things. So anyway, that is an update, and we'll keep you posted on, on how that program is, is rolled out. You know, we have a lot of, a lot on our plate right now. Tony and myself and most of the rest of the city hall, city hall staff are working from home for the most part. I'll be in the office tomorrow. Tony is usually in the office on Wednesdays and for any other special things that he's working on. And so you can always reach us. We're always available through email or through phone or, or text. But yeah, we're, we're operating as, as normal as, as we can at the moment.
Very good.
That's good to hear.
Yeah. Hopefully, it'll land soon.
I can't wait.
Hopefully.
It's getting old.
That's very old. Do we, can I ask if we have many cases in Avanale?
So Tony and myself are both on the Emergency Operations, I guess, Emergency Operations Center Committee for Avanale. And based on our, on the most recent communication with our chief, there are nine cases in Avanale at the moment. And one death doesn't appear to have been from Avanale. The one death that's been reported in Kings County. So, but they are monitoring a lot more people. And it's potentially, they could be monitoring people from Avanale. It's just the Kings County Health Department is very reluctant to release a lot of data about anybody they're monitoring or, or where they're, even those folks are, are located because of HIPAA purposes. But they, they recently, you know, started to release location information about those confirmed cases. So that's kind of where we're at right now. But as, based on the last count, we're at nine confirmed cases in Avanale.
I, I can tell you with daily updates out at the prison, there are no confirmed cases at the prison. They've tested five inmates for potential, and they've all come up negative. So, does that help? Yeah.
Good. That's good to hear.
That's good. That's good to hear, yeah.
And just to add to what Fernando was mentioning, what we've been told from the county so far is that of the 160-plus cases now, that apparently none of those cases have had to be hospitalized. No one's had to use a ventilator. So that's kind of been the bright side of things.
Well, that is, that's a good thing, really.
Yeah, it is. Wow, that's good.
Yeah. They are expecting more cases as more testing becomes available. But so far, I guess, no cases have been severe.
The state did set up a testing center at King, in Hanford, at the King's Government Center, from what I understand. And so I, I think that, they're looking at rural communities and making sure that, that rural communities also have the testing capacity that, that the rest of the state is, is getting.
So would our people have to go there to be tested?
Yes, from what I understand.
Okay.
I don't think there, I, I don't think the clinics in Avanale yet have the testing capacity. I think at some point, they, they may, once those become more, more widely available. But I think for the time being, you do have to go to Hanford to, to get tested.
Well, hopefully, the hot weather's going to take it away.
And the wind.
Right. Right.
That's what I'm praying for.
Well, it was a good meeting.
Yeah. We have another comment from the Planning Commissioners?
Just sad. I thought it was, it went very well. It's different.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to thank Tony and, and the Commissioners for, you know, for being so open. Tony, for setting this up. I know he's been working closely with the council to set up their meeting for Zoom. But thank you to, to you, the Commissioners, for, for being open-minded and, and agreeing to, to participate via phone and, and via Zoom. Thanks to Joseph for, for joining us as well and everybody else who was able to join us. I know Alberto and Lupe from Code Enforcement were on the line as well. So, yeah. Thanks, everyone.
Very easy. Thank you.
We're adjourned.
All right.
Night night.
Stay safe. Have a good one.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye. Fernando, you need me to sign papers, right?
Yeah, I'll, Tony, if you could leave the, the resolutions on my desk, and then I'll have, if, if Jenny wants to stop by tomorrow, I can, I can ever sign those.
Sounds good.
What, 24 hours at the office?
So I'm actually going to be in 8 to 5 tomorrow, so whenever you'd like to stop by.
Okay, great.
All right.
All right, I'll see you tomorrow then.
Thank you so much.
All right, good evening.
Bye. You too. Thanks, bye. Thanks, Tony.
Have a good night. Thank you all.
You too.